Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 at 6:09 PM. Apologize, our BOE meeting ran a little bit long. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would stand for that. We'll follow it up with the invocation by Pastor Richard Nakai, Bellevue Christian Center, 1400 Harville Drive.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we just thank you for bringing us together today, God. Your word says that if anyone desires wisdom, we just need to ask for it. And so, God, tonight, we just ask for your wisdom, God, in all the things that will be discussed. We ask for your wisdom in how to properly care for our city. We ask for your wisdom to care for all those that are in tough situations. God, we ask your wisdom, God, in seeing not just the numbers, but seeing the faces of the people that make up our wonderful community. God, we thank you for all the diverse opinions and perspective that you're bringing together today. And we ask, God, for unity through these discussions. And we ask for unity, God, as we desire to move our city forward, God, to make it better and to make it more unified. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Richard. I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. And I just noticed the Boy Scout troop that was coming tonight. I would have let you lead off the Pledge of Allegiance, but sorry I missed that. We had a little commotion here. But what scout are you, what pack? Why don't you come on up and just introduce yourself? All of you can at the podium, please. One at a time, step right up to the microphone, say your name, and first one can say the pack number.
I'm Angelo Simino, and I'm from Troop 474.
Troop 474, alright, thank you.
I'm Christian, I'm also with Troop 474.
I'm Hayden, and I'm from Troop 461.
Um, I'm Evie Bolus, and I am from Troop 461.
Alright, well, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. Phil's gonna take your picture. And I hope you learned something tonight. Thanks for coming out, participating. Okay, item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. 5A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move item number 16H and to move it right before item number eight. It deals with 7B and then next, the 16H would all deal with ALO Fiber.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Cook, second by Walsh, to adjust the agenda to move 16H right after 7B. Is that correct? Okay. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And I have a motion by Burns, second by Cook, to accept the agenda as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 5B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. And do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments, questions on the consent agenda? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have two this evening. 7A, Fort Crook Road Regional Award for Design of Fort Crook Road Redevelopment Master Plan. And Doug, would you come forward, our Public Works Director?
This will be fairly quick. HDR was hired to assist us in updating the master plan for Fort Crook Road. They submitted this plan for a regional evaluation and received a first-place award for the design for Fort Crook Road 2040. So, they wanted to share that with the city. And I thought it'd be appropriate for the mayor to get a picture with the award, if you have time.
Sure.
If Mr. Phil will take the photo. A lot of folks here in Bellevue participated in the evaluation of Fort Crook Road and the recommendations that were put forth by HDR. And the design doesn't fall with just any one given person, but the group effort to come up with this plan. So, I'm excited that we received an award and Bellevue's being recognized for our efforts.
Thank you. Very nice. That plan's getting a lot of attention with the mass transit and everything on it. So, that's pretty cool to see. Okay, item 7B, presentation from Mr. Dave Miller, Director of Ethical Engagement of ALO Fiber. And Dave, you have the mic.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, staff. I have with me Ed Jared. Ed and I are both out of our Lincoln ALO office. Ed is our Senior Manager over Plan Operations and will actually be overseeing the project that we're going to share with you tonight here in Bellevue. I wanted to give a short presentation on who ALO is and what services we offer and provide, and then how we work with communities that we serve. So, ALO Communications is a 100% fiber-optic telecommunications company. We offer fiber, internet, phone, and television. And we were founded in Imperial, Nebraska in 2003. So, we're Nebraska-based and primarily Nebraska-owned because when ALO came from Imperial to Lincoln, Nebraska, Nelnet, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, student loan servicing provider, actually became our parent company in 2016 and funded us to be able to build out Lincoln. And then, two years ago, Nelnet wanted to diversify a little more. So, we brought in a capital investment firm called SDC Financial Capital Partners out of New York. And so, they've actually infused us with additional capital to continue expanding throughout, not just the state of Nebraska, but also Colorado and Arizona. But our goal has been, from the very beginning, to make Nebraska one of the most connected states in the country. And I'll show you a map here in a little bit that will show that we are well on our way to doing that. So, when we come into a community and build our fiber optic network, our plan is to pass every home, every business, every school, government entity, with fiber so that everyone has the opportunity to get connected. What's unique about that is oftentimes, other providers will come into a community and just select certain areas of a neighborhood. It may be just the downtown area, or it may be certain wealthier neighborhoods. Our goal and our philosophy is, we want to make sure we build out all of the community, everything within city limits, and then expand out from there as demand grows. So, we are known as a competitive fiber-to-the-premise provider. Again, every home business will have the opportunity to connect to fiber if they so choose. And currently, we pass throughout Nebraska over a million in population. One of the things that's really near and dear to my role at ALO as Director of Ethical Engagement is, we have four core values that we strive to live out every single day, not just among our teammates, but in every community that we serve. And those are to be honest, to be exceptional, to be local, and be hassle-free. And I'll briefly touch on each one. The honest core value, our customers get to see that in our pricing. We don't do contracts. We don't charge for installation. We believe that it's our goal to earn our customers' business every single day. So, we're motivated to provide exceptional customer service. And we also don't do low-ball teaser rates just to lure people in and then hike up their prices six months or 12 months down the road. So, and people often ask, "What is your pricing?" And the best answer I can give is, we don't have that set, obviously, for Bellevue yet. We have a ways to go. But if you look at our other markets, you'll get a really good sense of what that is. And the point to being honest is, when customers look at pricing on our website or they call in one of our customer service reps, it's going to be the same as what their bill is as what they saw on the website or what they were told. And to us, that's extremely important. The exceptional core value is how we deliver customer service. I'm going to talk about something in a bit. I'll show you a slide on, it's called net promoter scores. And this is really feedback that we receive from customers that indicate how well we're providing service. But we often say, one of the ways we provide exceptional service is, guess what? If you call us, we will pick up the phone and we will actually talk to you. And you'll get to talk to a live person, which is almost unheard of these days. So, our goal is to go above and beyond in providing the little extra that leaves the customers with a very memorable experience. But the local core value, I think, is one that speaks to communities the most because by being local, we become part of the community. For example, here in Bellevue, our goal is to actually have a brick-and-mortar building. We will have a storefront so that, number one, customers can come face-to-face and talk to myself or talk to Ed or any of our numerous employees that we plan to hire and serve the community. But we also get involved with the community. We support things that are important to you all. You know, we like to get behind educational-type programs. We like to get behind music and the arts and sponsor those, get involved in parades. Anything that's important to Bellevue is going to be important to ALO and developing those long-term relationships. And then, the last one, core value of being hassle-free, is really, we want to make sure it's easy for people to do business with ALO. Make it easy for folks to contact us with questions or concerns that they have. And really, the hassle-free core value is simply the golden rule. You know, treat others the way you want to be treated. Or, as I recently heard, the platinum rule, which says, treat others the way they want to be treated. So, you will get to experience these core values from all 1,200 of our associates as you get to know ALO. So, we have 1,267 associates as of today and continuing to grow all the time, of course, as we expand into new communities. And we're currently serving in excess of 125,000 customers, which is phenomenal considering that, you know, we began in 2003. We're just getting ready to celebrate our 20th year in the business. The size of communities that we currently serve range in a size from 1,500, which is our smallest community, and that's Bridgeport, Nebraska, all the way up to 290,000, which is Lincoln. So, Ed and I were talking on the way up here. Bellevue would actually be our third-largest community to serve. Lincoln would be the largest, Greeley, Colorado would be second, and Bellevue would be number three. So, it's kind of nice to think about that. A couple of recent awards that we have received and recognitions on a national scale. PC Magazine has rated ALO top-five fastest internet service providers in the country. Regionally, on a national scale, we are number two. And we consistently get ranked in Nebraska as the fastest internet service provider. And this comes from UCL, by the way. So, here's the map that I mentioned. And again, it shows you the communities that we currently serve or are in construction or are both. Because once we start to light up a particular neighborhood in that community, we will start signing up, lighting people up. We say lighting the fiber up so that people can get connected. So, you'll see, again, we've done a really good job of staying true to our goal, which is making Nebraska the most connected state in the country. What do we offer? Well, we're known as a triple-play provider. It's not going to be just internet-only. We offer internet, excuse me, television and phone as well. And it's surprising how many people still will take linear TV. There's a lot of folks that are streaming, which is great for fiber because that allows you to have a symmetrical speed, which means with fiber, you'll have the same download as you will upload speed. And I think COVID really created a greater awareness and educated people on the need for having same-download and upload speeds, which fiber can deliver. So, what we would most likely offer in Bellevue, which is what we're doing in the other communities we announced in the region, is our standard offering is 500 megabits for internet. Again, symmetrical speeds. One gig, which is 1,000 megabits per second, upload and download, as well as the two-and-a-half gig. With the capability, because of our electronics, to someday be able to offer 10 gigabits, which, again, makes me laugh because people say, "Well, oh, my gosh, you don't need that much." True, not now. But our goal is to grow with every community we serve and future-proof that community so that as needs change, as we continue to innovate and grow, you, as a community, are going to be set. And all we have to do is essentially change out a few electronics without having to tear up and rebuild a brand-new infrastructure. So, future-proofing the community is our goal. And this allows you to connect multiple devices. You know, if you go home tonight and you actually realize how many devices are connected to your Wi-Fi, you might be surprised. With smart technology now, Ring doorbells, cameras, those types of things, laptops, phones, I mean, it can add up quickly. So, fiber is a very reliable technology. On the TV side of it, we're going to be able to offer local channels. We always get asked about that. We have wireless set-top boxes, which allow you to take them wirelessly and be connected to your modem to various TVs throughout your home if you so choose. And of course, we have phone service as well. But it's not just on the residential side. We also provide a full suite of services and solutions on the business side as well. So, businesses will have the opportunity to have, you know, up to gigabit speeds if they so choose, as well as a hosted PBX system, which is a complete phone system and business TV as well. This is just a graph to show, and I talked about this previously, but just to show from PC Magazine, the most recent rating that we got. And again, you can see ALO number five nationally for fastest and number two on the right in the region, or central region, which includes 13 states. Now, this is when I talked about providing exceptional customer service. Net promoter scores is something that you may not have heard, but you probably have all participated in. Anytime you've purchased a product or service and they give you a receipt or survey and ask you to fill it out, it's essentially asking, "How likely are you to recommend or refer that product or service to your friends or family?" And then, those responses all get added up and thrown into the net promoter score gonkulator. And it tells you how well you're doing in delivering your exceptional service. The overall net promoter score for any company ranges from a negative 100 to a positive 100. And the goal is to get as close to 70 as you can because 70 or above is considered to be world-class. So, if you can hit close to that as you can, you know you're delivering world-class product, world-class service. The average net promoter score in the telecommunications space is negative 2. So, ALO is consistently sitting between 60 and 70, again, because we stay true to living out this core value of providing exceptional customer service, always going above and beyond, putting the customer first. And this is, for us, this is the feedback and proof that we're staying true to that. We get asked often about the digital divide. This is something that is very important to us, but it's also important to the communities that we serve. Again, we come into a community, we want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to be connected, get connected, stay connected. So, during the pandemic, the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, came out and initiated what was called the Emergency Broadband Benefit. It allowed a short-term solution for low-income families to be able to get either free or at least reduced pricing on internet connectivity. We were one of the first internet providers that stepped up and said, "Absolutely, we're going to participate in this." And then, this year, January of this year, it got transitioned a little bit to become more of a long-term benefit for folks. It's now known as the Affordable Connectivity Program. The way it works is, for any low-income family or family member who qualifies for one of the many federal programs, such as Medicaid, SNAP, free and reduced lunch at the schools, they would qualify for this program. And this program offers a $30 month discount for households that meet those eligibility criterias. However, what ALO has done, and there's only been a handful nationally of providers that have agreed to do this, we said, "You know what? We'll take and receive the $30 subsidy, but we will offer people that qualify a 100-megabits-by-100-megabit speed at no cost." $30 a month does not cover the cost of that, but we said, "We're not going to charge the balance." We're going to make it free because we know the point of this program was to help low-income families get connected and stay connected. So, because of that, this is actually Brad Moline shaking Vice President Harris's hand. This is, he's our founder and CEO of ALO. So, he was invited to the White House about three months ago just so the White House could say, "Thank you for being one of these providers that is helping to close the digital divide." In our design process, and Ed, if you have any specific questions afterwards, can talk about this. But what we will do as we continue to design is, we're going to work with your experts. We've already been talking to Doug and his team. But we're going to work with your experts to make sure we understand the community, understand what projects you have going on so that we can truly be a partner and collaborate and not come in and act like we know Bellevue better than you do, because we don't. So, through our technology of using, you know, XGS-PON technology, that's going to allow us, in the future, provide up to 10 gig of speeds for the community. I talked about future-proofing the community because we look at this as a long-term relationship because fiber will last 40, 50 years. So, it really is long-term. And then, what we will have is a dedicated website to Bellevue. And I've got it listed here. This isn't the exact one, but alocommunications.com/construction gives people the FAQs on commonly-asked questions that people have when we come into a new community. I said, "One of our core values is to be hassle-free." And we want to stay true to that, certainly during the construction phase of the project because if we start off on the wrong foot and make people mad and tear up yards and don't restore it, they're not going to want to be our customers. So, we truly understand that. And again, strive to live by the hassle-free core value. And the last one on there is safety. Safety is extremely important to us as well. So, last two slides. Why ALO? Again, because for us, we want to be part of the community. We want to get to know you, what your needs and interests are. And again, we're going to look to have a local storefront here. We're going to look to hire, I think, our president and CEO said conservatively, somewhere around 30 to 35 folks as far as an employee base. So, we're going to help with economic development here and by increasing the employee base. But we really want to be seen as a long-term partner. So, by investing in physical assets, leasing space, warehouse yard, central office location, which is essentially where all of our electronics are housed that allow us to serve the community and empowering and assisting with economic development while future-proofing the city of Bellevue. Here's my contact information, Ed's contact information, and another name that you'll want to know is Al Schroeder, who is over our design team. So, I'll be happy to share this information, the PowerPoint with you and email it. But at this time, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you for your interest in Bellevue. One of the questions, you know, in the last four years I've been asked, one of the top-five questions is, "Are we ever going to get any more internet providers?" More options, so probably second to speeding questions, I guess. But it is a big question out there. And I want to thank you for your commitment. I know those jobs you talked about, I think, were an average of like $60,000 for salary. You're looking for space here in Bellevue, so you've got a place where the customer can actually go find you.
Yes.
So, just some great commitments, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, we will be asking for some help and assistance from the community and the experts you have here.
So, one other question I get is, and I know the answer to it, but just make it public. But we have SIDs that are in the ETJ to Bellevue, and those are included. It's not just within the corporate city limits. You're reaching out to those SIDs as well.
And that's one of the things that we would need help with in understanding where those relationships are, who it is we need to talk to. The initial design for Bellevue is city limits initially, but our ultimate goal is, "Let's serve everybody." So, that is one of the questions or one of the asks is, who in the SIDs do we need to be talking to, engaging, and starting to develop those relationships to understand processes?
And then likewise, for new subdivisions, it might be easier to get your utilities in before the houses go in?
Ed would be a good one to answer that. But our goal is, we want to go joint trench with new developments because the idea is, we only want to dig it up once or have it dug up once. So, yeah, being able to know who the developers are and establish those relationships are important, too. Did I answer that right?
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that we've already...
Could you come up to the microphone? I'm so sorry. Thank you.
We're recording everything, so that's why we need you up here.
Can you say your name also?
Yeah, Ed Jared, ALO Communications, Senior Manager of Plan Operations. To answer a little bit of that question is that we have reached out to OPPD and have started that relationship with getting in joint trench with SIDs in Sarpy County. So, yeah, we'll definitely close those gaps. And any developer's information that we can get from either OPPD or your council members would be very welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, thank you for the great presentation because I know the people of Bellevue are excited about having competition based on your customer service survey. Question is, where are, they're going to say, "When can..." A lot of them will say, "When can I sign up?" I mean, when is this all starting? Where is it going to be starting? What's kind of the plan on this?
You want to take that one, Mr. Construction?
Yeah, so, tentatively, once we get a signed franchise agreement, we'll find a place for our CO, which is our central office, and that's what feeds the fiber to the neighborhoods. And then, usually, we start from there and build out. We'll either build to the northwest or northeast or southeast, southwest. And then, we have feeder routes that we have to design and get approved by city council and city administrator where those permits come back and we can get our contractor on those. And then, once we get those areas built, usually, it's about 120 days from the start of construction till we have a live pond. We call it a passive optical network where we have 800 to 1,000 customers roughly that will service in that one pond. That will be our launch pond, live pond, that we'll be able to service those customers. And then, usually, it's about every 90 days after that, if everything goes smooth, that those customers will be able to do.
So, Ed, do you think you're going to be starting in the downtown area, in the northwest area, in the southwest area? Do you have any idea?
We don't have that idea right now until we get some property and our CO location identified. What we have done in the past as well is, starting on the northwest side of a market and just move our way to the southeast. But we definitely want to start where we have our CO connection. So, that way, we are able to get customers lit up as we go.
So, can we tell people that probably within the next year, they'll have choices? Because they're going to want to know when.
Depending on, and then also on our website, it will show you. We'll share some information on, once we get the franchise signed and everything, we'll share the information on our website. It'll say, "You can punch in construction," or punch in your address, and it'll say the process that we're at. Usually, it's a couple of weeks behind, but if it's in the red, then that means it's in the construction. If it's in yellow, that means we're pulling fiber and getting ready to splice. And then, so, there's the permitting approval, then the construction process. Then, we have cabling teams pulling the fiber in. And then, we'll do the splicing and testing of the fiber and then turn it over to sales, to the community.
I just want to plug it in. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Appreciate the question.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dave and Ed. I appreciate you coming in and ALO coming to our community. I'll welcome you even before we vote. But I think you've answered my question in three of your core values and also your platinum. You do unto others what they would do to themselves. But the biggest complaints I get when people come in and do trenching is how they put the yards back and how they do that. So, a two-part question. Will that be done just as your core values say? And two, you identified that they... And two, you identified that the fiber is only good for approximately 50 years. So I assume you've got plastic PVC or cable containers, and then you just pull those old fibers out and put new ones into that. But will you be going back in and doing trenching? Or will you do it one time and then pull the cable through?
I'm glad you asked that. The restoration process, we will restore to, it's how we found it. It takes a little time, as you guys know, that, you know, water and, and the process, but it's usually pretty quick. We have a great set of contractors that have worked for us for several years now, and we'll definitely employ those same contractors to do this project. And then we also have a field engineering team and resolutions team that will QCR contractors and also take any complaints from the community. And as I was telling Mr. Clark, you know, if any complaints come into your offices, direct them back to us. Well, I'll see to it personally that that customer has heard and that we solve, resolve those problems. And then the, the second part of that question, the conduit that we place, we always place a second conduit for future path. So if that, the fiber that we placed in that first initial mainline run is coming to the end of life or doesn't have enough distribution to feed, you know, a growing area, then we have that spare conduit that we can pull in a new fiber in and, and be able to light that up. And we'll do that without, you know, disrupting the customers at the time. You know, we'll, we'll use the original fiber that we already have and to keep those customers connected. And then we'll pull in a new fiber and then get that lit up overnight usually. But we always notify our customers if there's any changes or outages. So yeah, we do future-proof our, our paths so we don't have to, less disruption to the ground.
Okay, good. And I will be happy to forward any complaints.
Yeah.
And in the contract, as I read through it, it does say that you will be doing the fiber underground, wherever it is existing underground, and you'll be pulling it on wires and poles where that's part of the process. And in Bellevue, we do have both. So it talks about trimming trees. I believe it says only on public property. Are residents going to see anybody trimming their trees on private property?
Yes, in the easements where there, where there is an easement in the rear of the property, we'll, our, we have an arborist on staff that will be trimming trees out in front of our cabling teams. Otherwise, you're trying to pull fiber in those tree spaces, it gets wrapped up and you just can't do it. So we'll have arborists go out ahead of, ahead of the contractor just to trim the space. And it'll be, you know, it'll be presentable and professionally done upfront. And, and we'll have to talk about the communication to homeowners on that as well. But that's the plan is to have an arborist go out in front of our contractor to clear that space.
Appreciate that it's an arborist and they know how to trim and take care of trees. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman McCaw.
Mayor, Ed, frontline feed or rear lot?
We will be in the easement, so a lot of rear lot, wherever utilities are now.
Where the utilities are now. That's the question I'm getting now.
Yes. So what? 90% of the time, we're in with OPPD or the, the electrical easements in the rear of the properties. So that way we can do one path and feed both sides of the easement. There are places where there's just frontline or front yard easements and we'll deploy at that location, so.
Perfect.
Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome you also. I like that program, I think it was called the ACP, where you're talking about less fortunate households maybe. I like that. I, I think kids that are sitting at home today, not having maybe internet or some type of service, are at a great disadvantage to other kids competing in school and for other reasons. So I, I'm glad your, your company has stepped up to that. And I just, we, we, for years, people have talked about competition, competition, competition. And I'm glad to see you coming here, and I would just ask people to just be patient because there might be some disruptions, maybe in yards or stuff like that. Be patient. They will put it back to the way it was or the way it should be or whatever. Just give them time to get the cable in and get everything done. But I, I just want to make one comment about talking some of your core values. I sent an email to Mr. Ristol with several questions about this, and I don't know who responded to it. But I just want to, real quickly, the writing in red is their response, the writing in black is mine. And here's half a page. And here's the second page of my questions and concerns, all, all good, I mean, nothing negative, that someone from your company responded to. And I sent this to Mr. Ristol Sunday, and I think in the response came back to me Monday. So somebody, I know Mr. Clark, someone, either you or someone in your department responded here at the bottom. But all the red was basically the response from your company. And I, to me, that just shows you guys are in it to win. And I appreciate responses like that because I got it before the meeting. Because if I asked you all these questions, we'd probably be here till about seven, eight o'clock. So whoever, whoever responded, thank you. Doug also, thank you for responding too. But it meant a lot to me to, to see someone taking the time and effort to do that. And if you're willing to do that, and I'll share it with the council members because a lot of the questions, a couple of them have already been answered by these gentlemen. But I had a lot of different questions about more or less customer service and being in their yard and making people happy, I guess. So, but thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Burns.
No, I want to thank you guys too, and you guys did a very good job in presenting and also just welcome. And then the only thing I would ask is, is that when you, before you guys do any work, can you just maybe talk about the process that you have with communicating with people? And, you know, so that, you know, because I mean, some people will be aware, some people won't. You know, before there's a shock factor or anything.
So a couple of things, I mean, first of all, yeah, thank you, Mr. Cook. We will make sure the right person gets, gets the kudos. I mean, hopefully it shows you we're serious when we say being exceptional is one of our core values. So thank you for that nice comment. Communication is extremely important for us. So as Ed was referencing, once, as we continue to move forward, we will have, first of all, a website set up specifically for Bellevue that will give people information, give them the opportunity to sign up for something called Stay in the Know. They can simply put in their email or their address if they have an interest, and they will get periodic updates as to what we're doing, where we're doing it. Ed mentioned there's, there is a map that will be there that shows where we are in the process, whether we're still in design, construction, or, you know, we're testing the fiber and we can do installations. So that's part of it. We also have a very active social media team, specifically just social media, that gets the word out to educate the community and also responds to any questions or concerns from the community, which is why we encourage, please just shoot those over to us and let us respond. In addition to that, our marketing team will provide mailers, and we even have teams that go out and will do door hangers to let folks know, hey, somebody from ALO is going to be in the neighborhood this, this day or this, this week to be servicing. So be on the lookout, and if you have questions, there's a number there to call. And all of our trucks that you'll see will also have contact information. So anything to add?
Yeah, I was just going to add, so the notification from our mailer, or for our marketing, will go to the mailboxes that are known in the, in the area. The, the notes to get, so we have our contractor to go out and do the white lining of the locates, where they want to have locates come in. And while they're doing that, they're talking or knocking on doors to gain access into those easements. And then if they're not home, then we have a sticky note that has a contractor name on it and our ALO website on there as well. But before we do any digging, we'll have stakeholder meetings with Mr. Clark's team, OPPD, any gas companies, all locating companies that we can get to come to the meetings. And then we'll have those every week if we need to, usually that turned into every other week. But starting out, we'll have stakeholder meetings every week to communicate that through the people that have the utilities in the ground. And then our contractor or our field engineer team will be reaching out to homeowners as we're coming into their neighborhoods.
Perfect. I really appreciate you both for explaining that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, great presentation. Again, we're going to move item 16H up next. So that is approved and authorized the mayor to sign the franchise agreement with ALO Bellevue LLC to provide services, facilities and equipment to meet future cable-related needs. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve item 16H.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? All right, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
All right. Thanks again, guys, and we'll see you soon. Back to item nine, approved citizen communication. We did not receive any, 10, we did not receive any liquor license applications. 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading, we have none this evening. Item 12, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. 12A ordinance number 4110, updated compensation ordinance to reflect change in pay range for employees that are unclassified and employees covered by Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. Ordinance number 4110, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number 4097, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up 12A for public hearing. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak regarding ordinance number 4110? If so, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding item 12A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. That third reading will be November 1, 2022, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none this evening. Item 14, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. 14A, request approval, event license application for annual Old Town Trick or Treat on Sunday, October 23, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and waiving of the event license fee. And I will open up 14A for public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Please state your name and address and sign in.
Sorry. That's all right. It's Margie Crawford. Address is 1552 V Avenue, Belisko, Iowa. Business address is 2243 Franklin in Old Town Bellevue, a bridal boutique and tux. I am present to answer any questions that anybody may have. I know we have a new, a couple of new board mem, or excuse me, council members since the last time I was in front of the councils, so I am here for any questions anybody may have and.
I would just.
Now that we're post-COVID and.
Yep. I would just, thank you for putting this on. How many years have you done it?
I think this is the sixth.
Six, sounds about right. It's a great event for Bellevue. It brings a lot of families down in Old Town. And I, I know there's well over 1,000 kids every time, every time.
Between 1,000, 2,000 kids, 5 to 10,000 people, not uncommon to see in Old Town.
Yep. So thank you for taking your time to do that. And is there any questions for Margie while she's up here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding 14A? Please come forward. 14A, public hearings open. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing and I'll take a motion. Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve the event license application for the annual Old Town Trick or Treat on Sunday, October 23, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and waiving of the event license fee.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any discussion, comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 15 resolutions. 15A, resolution number 2022-30, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign preliminary services supplemental agreement, BK 1935-001, with Olson for the 36th Street Sheridan plat view. MAPPA 3773-1, CN 22288, in an amount not to exceed $22,352.45. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item 15A, resolution 2022-30.
Second. Motion by Cook, seconded by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16 is current business. 16B, approve the redevelopment agreement and redevelopment promissory note allowing up to $2,468,000 plus accrued interest to offset TIF eligible expenses for Mercury Property Management, Inc., Old Town Redevelopment Project located at lots 1 and 3 Civic Center Plaza, replat 1. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item 16B.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Garing. I thought you were running for council or something. You're here so much. Thank you. 16C. Approve the redevelopment agreement and redevelopment promissory note allowing up to $4,028,917 plus accrued interest to offset TIF eligible expenses for Elevate Lofts LLC, College Park Edition Redevelopment Project located on Lot 1 College Park Apartments, addition as of October 18, 2022, and rescind all prior redevelopment agreements and redevelopment promissory notes approved for said property. Do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve 16C.
Second.
Motion by McCaw, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional engineering services agreement for RJN for 2023 flow monitoring planning in an amount not to exceed 30, or $20,000. I'll take a motion. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item 16D.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number two to the original agreement with RJN Group, Inc., increasing the agreement amount for the Witted Creek Sanitary Basin Modeling Project in an amount not to exceed $7,000. Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve item 16E.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement with RJN Group, Inc. for the city's 2023 GIS gap analysis project in an amount not to exceed $27,500. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve 16F.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal for 2023 professional on-call engineering field and GIS services in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Take a motion. Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve item 16G.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions?
Here, I have a question. Just a clarification on this item. Is the $10,000 basically a retainer and then any work that's done under that? work that's done under that retainer is additional cost?
Any other questions? All right. Motion by Burns, seconded by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. for storm drainage projects in an amount not to exceed $10,484. Take a motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item 16I. Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16J, approve the temporary and permanent easements and right-of-way agreement with the city of Omaha in order to effectuate the easement land swap deal, parcel number 010565353, Hastings Banner Park. And do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will happily make the motion to approve item 16J.
Second.
Happy motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16K, recommend approval of temporary and permanent easements and right-of-way agreement with the city of Omaha in order to effectuate the easement land swap deal, parcel number 011220643, Hastings Banner Park. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will joyfully make the motion to approve 16J.
Second.
Joyful motion by Preister and seconded by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 17, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current report. Monthly report is given at the first council meeting each month. October report will be attached to the November 1 council packet. Any questions on past report? Okay, we'll put those in the record. No closed session this evening, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we happily adjourn. Second.
That's a happy and a happy motion and second by Welch and Cook for the second, so. Please vote.